Call a meeting to order. The board has just returned for executive session. Invite you all to join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first item on our agenda, our announcements. Mrs. Flynn, would you like to?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Some of you may know or have known Jim Clark, Jim and Ruth Clark. They live in Woods Hole. Jim passed away this past Saturday. Both he and his wife have been huge contributors to this community in many, many ways, more than I can even mention. Jim particularly with his association with MBL and HOE for many years as a member of the board of each of those organizations. And also, I think he served as chairman several times at MBL and HOE. But I particularly knew them because of their generosity of time and spirit with Highfield Hall. I don't think Highfield Hall, pardon me, would be here today if it were not for their huge contributions and their generosity. Jim was 93. He lived a very long and full life. And they've had a home here in Woods Hole for many years. But he used to tell me stories about when he was a boy and his father would bring him to Wacoit. And oftentimes, they would spend summers in Wacoit. So he has a long history with the town. And I remember one day, he showed me a lot of pictures of his family and his mother and himself in some of those early years. So I think I wanted to say this tonight because some don't really realize, oftentimes, we never really know who the people are in the town who are giving of themselves and of their spirit to various activities in the town or various organizations in the town. And these are two people who really don't necessarily rise to the top. You don't see their names in the paper. But for many years, they were very generous in their time and in their spirit. And I couldn't let the moment pass. He passed away on Saturday, and I think the service is scheduled for this Friday at the Church of the Messiah in Woods Hole. So please just take a moment of silence and remember him in your prayers. Thank you.
Mr. Clark was also my father's roommate in high school.
That's right. Remember his 90th birthday? And your dad was there and they were talking about that. I remember that. Maybe it was his 80th birthday, but that's back a long way.
Do we have any announcements? I have two. One is, we did have a request from a resident for the possibility of using a current septic tank for the system in the Little Pond sewer area. And we responded, lengthy response both to Mr. Jack and from GHD, our consultant, that this was an issue that had been looked into initially. And the information that was found is there would be a more expensive option than what has been recommended, that the tanks would have to be dug up, or not dug up, but dug down to, cleaned out, inspected. And all those costs would be more than the recommendation of using the grinder pumps, but it had been looked into. The second was an issue that came up last week with a question about a new Silver Beach and could the betterment be paid off in advance, either in full or in part? And it has been confirmed that our system is in place. Any payment done in advance will be calculated and can be done just as if you repay a mortgage. And so I just want to get back on those two pieces of information.
Doug, if we could just say, one thing I really forgot to say about Jim and Ruth was their contribution to Cape Cod Healthcare and Falmouth Hospital. The Clark Center, the Clark Cancer Center of Falmouth Hospital was donated, I think. I don't remember the exact amount, but I know it was a huge contribution from Jim to the $10 million, yes, to the Clark Center. Because I remember one day, somebody wanted to ask Jim a question about what he could do maybe with the Clark Center, with the hospital. And I remember him saying, "They've already cashed my check." And that was a $10 million check, so. Anyway, thank you.
The next item is public comment. If does anyone like to make a comment on something that's not on our agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill Dynan, Precinct 5, New Silver Beach. You answered part of my questions from last week on the Silver Beach betterment request. I did get the amount from the assessors office, Jim, and the amount is $21,163. Of that, $475 is interest. So that went out to the membership of New Silver Beach. People, if they want to pay that off, write a check tomorrow, they can do it. The other part was, last week, there was a request and it was approved for conservation restrictions on 53 Hunt Street in New Silver Beach, which is in the zone, the area for the storage system. There was no mention as far as payment for that. I understand that they should be charged the same as other members of that association down there, the $27,500 plus the 2.5%. But there's no discussion on that when you approve that plan. And I just, hopefully you could clarify that.
I believe, I mean, I didn't think there any more hookups were allowed, so I'll look into that.
That's a hookup. It's like 100 feet from the water. And obviously, I understand that money goes back into the general fund if it is once they pay that. But obviously, that could offset some interest charges if there's additional monies that are unforeseen for paying bills that we talked about last week when that was calculated.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fineran?
You brought it up, but it's not on the agenda, so I guess it's fair play. Your answer regarding the septic tanks being used for a pump chamber is absolutely incorrect. I challenge you to get an engineer that'll back up the story that came out of the DPW, obviously. They're designed for that, they're used for that purpose all over town. I was asked among many people by contractors, excavators, they told me it would be more expensive. I guess they know their business as well, so there seems to be some kind of an issue here. And I'm sure it'll be addressed on town meeting floor along with the other grinder pump issue, but that's absolutely incorrect and wrong.
Any other public comment? Next item on our agenda are the minutes of the meetings, and I'm going to have us hold those until our next meeting. I knew I needed a few more, a little more time to actually review them and make sure that they fit with what I remembered, so I'll ask that we delay that, please. Next item is license and this approved request to extend the seasonal all alcohol club license until January 15, 2016 for the Seaco Shores Association. The request had been until January 18. We're actually restricted, it can only be a seasonal extension until the 15th, and so that's what's being requested. I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion?
If this ends on the 15th of January in 2016, I believe that's a Friday. I didn't know, do you always, I don't know in Falmouth's rulings, do you always need to have a liquor license to serve alcohol? Because I believe there's a restaurant that isn't open right now, that we would just bring whatever wine, beer or wine, we wanted to, because they didn't have a liquor license.
They can't serve it, that's a bring your own system.
So then it would be, and that is something that is acceptable in Falmouth? Thank you. So if that is something, if there's anyone here from this organization, do they have to have permission from us or they can just do that? If they wanted to, you would bring your own and then they would serve, no one is serving them from the organization, they would just serve themselves? Is that?
That's allowed without a license.
It's allowed?
Actually, I'm not sure if it's allowed in an institution that has a license to then do it. If they did not have an alcohol license, you're allowed to do that. If you have a, like, alcohol license, you can't.
Okay, that makes sense, that makes sense.
You do one or the other.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions? We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None of the ayes have it. All right, the next is to make a referral to the zoning board of appeals on the village of Old Main. This is an LLC comprehensive permit. Mr. Sussman, do you want to?
Sure, I'll make a couple of comments on this. The standard practice for the board to hear projects that are before the zoning board of appeals, you receive a formal referral from the zoning board on comprehensive permits. You did see this for the site approval process with mass housing, but you generally reserve any specific project-related comments until it is before the zoning board of appeals. This is your opportunity to offer any of those comments or to offer anything that you may have heard from the public about the project. Of course, there'll be full hearings before the zoning board of appeals, but this is a process this board has taken advantage of on many, many projects in the past. And if you have no comment, that is also acceptable.
And the public hearing will be on November 5 with the board of appeals on this matter also, just to make sure people are aware of that. Although, this is, I think, our last bite at the apple, there are other bites at the apple for other boards to make sure that comments get. Do we have any comments or questions from this board?
Well, just a question. I know the question of enforcement of affordability comes up over and over again.
The monitoring?
The whole monitoring issue. And I didn't really see anywhere in here where there has been identified a monitoring agency that would actually be verifying that two affordable housing units would remain affordable.
I think it is in there. I remember seeing it.
The Burnsville Housing Authority?
Oh, yes.
We just don't have a copy of the commitment from them attached, but there is one.
Yes.
And any questions? I entertain a motion to refer this, the application to the zoning board of appeals for Village of Old Main.
I would so move.
Second. Mrs. Flynn, motion a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None of the ayes have it. Okay, and next is to authorize an issuance of the Springbys Request for Proposals, RFP for Springbys Road. We have a draft RFP in front of us. This has been reviewed by our town council, town planning, public works, and the finance director.
I'll move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Mr. Patterson?
Well, just going through it and reviewing it, I noticed that there's a place that says insert Hall's town email address. I assume somebody's going to go through here and fill in the blanks. I know this is in a draft form. That was one question I had. On page five, the description of the project, under the category description, it points to various abutters to this property, which include seaside, auto body, Harbor Chevrolet, Napa Auto Parts. I think there's a plumbing supply company there now. And I'm not sure that those are the correct abutters any longer. Is there something you might want to check on? We'll check that. Okay.
Are you thinking of Webb?
Webb.
Yeah.
So I think that businesses have turned over and we need to just kind of try to proof this out, make sure that it's accurate. And the last one's on page nine, there's a dollar figure that's missing. I don't know how you're going to fill it in, but otherwise, I think it's, does everything I would hope.
I did have a question on the number of units that we're actually suggesting for this. There's one place they would suggest, I'm afraid I have to find it again, 20 to 35 to 40. And I think that the idea in it was that there was a possibility of 30 units plus 10%. But there was one place, I think very early on where it was, I'm sorry, I can't find it.
I think I can help. I think if the proposer demonstrates that the project is economically infeasible with a lesser number of units, they may submit a proposal for, I think it's 50% more, so up to 40 units.
Okay.
But that's only if it's demonstrated as economically infeasible.
I guess it was in the memorandum where it says, I was trying to understand why it says manage 20 to 35-40 affordable housing units.
Oh, that's in Paul's memorandum, yeah.
Right. And if you're going to have a range, why are you expressing the range in two different ways? But then in the document later, I did get that question answered, so I'm also done. Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve, to authorize the issuance of this Springbys Road RFP. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None of the ayes have it. Next item is to accept a donation from the Austin Foundation for approvals to West Falmouth Harbor Dock.
Move approval. Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And thank you.
And thank you very much. And anyone against? None of the ayes have it. The next is to authorize a proposal on Buzzards Bay Area Stormwater Project in cooperation with the Association to Preserve Cape Cod and the Hurstley-Witten Group. And we had already on September 14, provided a letter of commitment for this one, and the pre-proposal was approved. And we've now been invited to submit a full proposal from the Association Preservation of Cape Cod, whether they provide it. If the project is funded, the funds will be used to assess stormwater discharges into Buzzards Bay from our four subwatersheds. Any other questions, or comments?
No, I move approval that we authorize you to send the drafted letter that's been provided in our package.
Did you want to say anything?
As you read from the Association to Preserve Cape Cod, it's basically exactly the same commitment that we had during the pre-proposal. We have tweaked the grant to focus a little bit more attention specifically on shellfish and shellfish beds that are impacted by stormwater. And that's really the only change, but that's not requiring any additional commitment from the town.
The commitment is an in-kind match of $23,500, but not a dollar figure. Okay, motion, a second, to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None of the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is a special events recurring. This is a request to add a holiday market from the Falmouth Farmers Market in Marina Park. This is for Tuesday, November 24, 2015, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. The hours, I believe it's from 11 to 4, where the, I guess the setup will be 9 o'clock, so 9 to 4, including setup and breakdown.
A motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None of the ayes have it. All right, now we're on to our business. 7:30, right on time. Mr. Jack, on a discuss and vote to approve the private contractor's snow plowing rates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proposal you have before you to increase the rates, the last time that we increased those was in 2008, so it's been a significant amount of time, seven years. Town had increased them in 1999 and then prior to that, 2005. So what we're trying to do here is to remain competitive in the southeast region in order to attract the most qualified contractors with the best type of equipment. So if I may, I'll run down the list and indicate what we had paid before, what the proposed rate is now for this year. Four-by-four pickup with an eight-foot plow was $60, we were going to $70. Four-by-four with a nine-foot plow, and this category would also include those vehicles that are under 18,000 GBW that would also carry a nine-foot plow. That would go from 70 to 80 dollars. That actually represents the bulk of the type of plow operators that we get are in that category. Then would be the six-wheel plows, six-wheel vehicles that are above 18,000 GBW. Those are generally the smaller dump trucks, and they would carry a 10-foot plow. That would be going from 80 dollars to 110 dollars, so that's one of the more substantive increases that we have. But of course, with that plow and that particular truck, gives them a greater ability to move more in snow, and it's more effective basically due to the plow width. A 10-wheel dump truck that would be utilized for hauling and/or dumping only, such that when we clean up the Woods Hole and/or the main street areas and physically remove snow, we're not looking for a truck that's going to plow, we're looking for one that's going to haul snow. A 10-wheel dump truck that would have an 11-foot plow with standard attachment would go from 90 dollars to 120 dollars. This, too, is another type of truck that we are trying to attract because that is capable of handling some of our primary roads as well. We generally have to handle primary roads because we have the larger vehicles. And we also have a loader, which would be two cubic yard capacity and up. That was at 90 dollars, going to 125. That's essentially for the larger storms where we have more snow to move, and it's usually heavier after the fact. So this would give us a better capacity to clean up after a snow event. Backhoes would go from 75 to 85. Backhoes, quite contrary to popular opinion, are not that effective on public roads. They're very slow, they slip, and they're actually light. I mean, it looks like a heavy piece of equipment, but they were not originally intended to plow snow. So being able to push snow with a rubber tire vehicle like that normally doesn't work that well, so they're really not that effective. One of the more effective pieces of equipment, however, is a bobcat or a skid steer. That was at $53 before, and we're proposing 75. We currently have a plow list that includes all of our sidewalks, and we generally have, I believe, seven contractors that would go on that list, but the more the merrier because it means that we'd be able to get the sidewalks cleared out faster than we have in the past. So the goal would be to try to attract those bobcat operators as well. They also plow the, like that. So one of the more important things to understand, too, is that towns look for these operators and contractors somewhat differently, if you will. And there's really two schools of thought. One is the size and the power of the vehicle, and the second would be the size and capacity of the actual plow. So when you look at an eight-foot plow, which is the smallest one that we have up here, the eight-foot plow only has an effective plow width of between 6 and 1/2 feet and 7 feet when it's angled in order to go into a plow operation. So eight feet is the straight across plow width. So when you're plowing two passes down a typical residential road, and you're only accommodating about 6 and 1/2 feet per pass, it doesn't really open it up significantly enough to allow two vehicles to pass each other. So that type of street normally then requires three passes. That's more time and more effort that we have to put into it. The larger plows, if you put a nine-foot plow on that, then you're going to get the equivalent of about a 7 and 1/2 to 8-foot width per pass. So they are generally much more efficient. And of course, there are those that come in with trucks that really can't handle the larger plows. But having something like that is like having a mouse come to a picnic with a watermelon. It's got great intentions, but it's not very likely it's going to be able to eat that watermelon. So our goal here is really going for the plow width, but we require inspections on all contractors' vehicles prior to plow operations in order to ensure that the vehicle is fully capable of handling the plowing operation as well.
Questions?
Question. Have you, I know that in your budget, you're going to have to figure out what the additional costs are going to be. Do you have any idea what those might be? I mean, I realize that it's important to do this because you get what you pay for, and if other people are paying more and we're paying less, that doesn't help us at all. But do you have any idea what the additional costs might be? Per day, say, or something like that?
It would actually, it would actually be difficult to figure out because the, when we go into a plowing operation, every snowfall incurs costs, regardless of what the actual level of the snow is, because at a minimum, we have to get the roads ready for the snow. All right, so we're going to call out crews two hours in advance, no matter what. But when we get into plowable events, there are so many factors involved in that event. It's the duration, the actual temperature at the time, the humidity, there's just so many factors involved to determine how long we're going to be physically plowing on any given event. But I will say this, though, that overall, the larger vehicles with the larger plows on them are much more efficient on a plowing operation than the smaller units. So that being said, in theory, then you would incur about the same amount of costs, even though you're paying a higher hourly rate because the plowing operation would be more efficient. Now, the other thing, too, here is that we generally employ between 30, 35, 40 private operators, and then we have about 30 pieces of equipment that we would put out. So here, we would be trying to get as many as possible in order to cover all routes and provide for breakdowns and/or contractors who can't put in the actual time, you know, that we normally do. So overall, it's going to cost as least as much, but it would be difficult to determine what the differential cost would be because there's so many variables. But I would say overall, though, it would cost more if we had more operators.
But I know, too, with the snow and ice budget, there's only so much money you budget because usually, we all know that you can't really estimate what it would be. And so at the, kind of at the end of the year, a town meeting, we always have to come back and say, "We need this to cover snow and ice."
Yes.
Because you just can't, you can't predict.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I was just thinking about the expenses for the drivers themselves. They pay their own insurance.
Yes.
And is this just an hourly rate that we're talking about?
It is.
And if it goes beyond the number of hours, I'm kind of getting over to time and a half, or it's just straight hours?
No, these are hours regardless of how many hours of plow. They're guaranteed a minimum four-hour calling. So as soon as we make a phone call, they're definitely going to get at least four hours of time. But there are no other rates other than these. So there, it's a standard rate, no matter what the duration of the event is, no matter when the event is.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes, I noticed that you indicated that you actually would replace one plow blade per year, per contractor, is that correct?
Yes.
But beyond that, this is actually going to cover, this is going to cover their labor and wear and tear on their equipment.
Yes.
As well as insurance costs.
Yes.
Fuel?
Yes. They pay their own fuel.
Just because I won't otherwise have this opportunity, but I know with the challenges of last year's storm, there were several complaints about the manner of plowing, whether it be someone just finished shoveling the driveway and then the snow was brought back in, and these were elderly folks, so it's no small task to have to do that twice. And so my point is, is there a sort of orientation that's given to the independent contractors about courtesy or, you know, preferred methods or something like that?
Yes, they have, they have a whole host of written instructions that they have to comply with, which doesn't normally include that type of instruction, but that's an instruction that would be given at the time that they arrive. But I would say that generally, if we have a fairly large, and I'm not going to use the blizzard of last year as an example, that was, those were extraordinary circumstances. But one of the bigger problems that we had in the last season were the multiple events on the heels of each other after a large-scale storm that we did on January 26, 27. That one dropped 20, I believe it was 24 inches over a 21-hour duration. So we created significant wind rose, then it would rain, and that made them very hard, very heavy, and then the temperature stayed below 32, and that's very difficult for clearing the roads. So then the multiple So then the multiple snow events that we had after that, because of the large windrows that we already had, it was difficult to put more snow up onto those windrows. So if a plow on a subsequent event hits those windrows, then it will plow in a driveway in a, in a case like that. Now, when we go out to try to correct the road width after major events like that, we usually send a chaser truck with a larger truck. We have to send a larger truck in to be able to push that heavy snow back, but then a chaser truck goes along with that truck in order to remove it from the driveways whenever possible. So we do try to respond to that. We try not to cause it to begin with, but sometimes it's inevitable. But we always do try to correct it as well.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Tim?
I think, along with that, though, I think it's important for residents to realize that there's a difference between town-owned roads and private roads in terms of how much clearing you actually do. Could you clarify?
Yes, the town will plow private roads, and we do that as a matter of course. So in other words, all the routes that are set up, there is no distinction to the operator as to which ones are private or which one are town. Thus, the same level of effort is expected on all the roads, and the same type of quality is expected on all the roads. But we have over 400 miles of road, of nearly half of which are private roads, and that's what most people do not know. And it's not an obligation of the town to plow private roads. The town just does that as a courtesy, if you will. The responsibility, full responsibility for the maintenance of private roads lies with those who live on that private road, and that can include plowing. So they always have the opportunity to get their own contractors if they wanted to do that. But as a matter of course, they're included in our routes. There is no distinction between a town road and a private road, so it's not as though anybody even understands which ones are which. They're supposed to plow on the same.
I see in your cost, you have the Barnstable plow rates. I also heard on the radio, they went up a week ago. Are these the ones that just went up, or is this, what was the, had been the rates?
These are the, these are the ones for this current season, yes.
Any other questions? A little approval?
Second.
Motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, one? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Our next item is discussion about the senior center site visibility. We had a report last week on this. I think to start off our discussion, in the report, in addition to locations that are being presented, we also had a presentation about the size and the operating budget for the senior center. And while I'm prepared to move forward with consideration of sites, I do still have some concerns about some of those issues that I was, I was surprised about the operating budget that was being proposed, and I'm a little bit concerned as to where we're going to get the funds in the future to run as large a place. But I think the information we have about the site, I'm prepared to be able to move forward, but I still do want to have those concerns and find out exactly when we have that discussion about. I think that the architect did a great job in reviewing all those and came forward with some ideas about what it might look like. But I still think we have a little bit of work to do to really fine-tune that as, when we actually design it.
I share those concerns as well. I, you know, if these projections are true, and over time, they're going to go up, it's going to be a considerable increase in our operating budget of what. My question is really, when are we going to have an opportunity to look at this and decide just what level of services the senior center facility will make available to our citizens? Because I'm not sure we really had that kind of give-and-take discussion and trying to figure out how to stay within a reasonable budget, a reasonable, reasonable revenue expectations, I guess is the right word to put, right way to put it. So I would like to see some follow-on discussion before we actually kind of decide on the scale of the facility and the operation and services that will be provided.
Mr. Finn?
Well, I kind of go along with Sam's thinking here in that I think this decision tonight is a bit out of sequence. I mean, I'm looking at the big picture. Believe me, I'm not opposed to any of this. I'm all for seniors since I've already hit that mark. And, but I'm thinking about what we do about capital facilities planning. And I think we need to really weave that into our discussions as, as selectmen, and maybe at certain times of the year, we should, we should have a discussion. Like, right now, we have, we have some facilities proposals for town hall. We have facility planning for the, for a new senior center. We have facilities planning for, I can't remember what the third one is now, but there's, oh, well, the dispatch center, that's one. So we're doing facilities planning, but I think we need to grab hold of it and put it together and have a serious discussion, a discussion about on an annual basis, at least every year. What are, what are our planning opportunities for the year? What are our revenue opportunities, if there are any? And, and I'm thinking in terms of this, this, this facility that, that we're proposing with, with the senior center. And I'm thinking about also, right now, with Gus Caney. We know that there are some programs in there that are offered to seniors. I'm not sure what they all are, but I know there are some. And I also know that the, that Gus Caney operates Monday through Friday, and, but they also, on the weekends, is when Gus Caney is really busy, because that's when all the kids are out of school and, and people use that facility a lot on the weekend. But during the week, they don't use it much at all. So I think as we plan new facilities, we have to think about whether or not we're creating obsolescence. That's a strong term to use. But whether we're creating obsolescence in other facilities. So if some programs are being, if one facility is, is being utilized for certain programs, and those are going to transfer to somewhere else, what does that mean? I think one thing we really do need in this town, whether it's in a senior center or whatever it is, is a multipurpose room and a kitchen, so that when we have meetings, that we have it in a facility that will hold a significant number of people, but at the same time, it also has other facilities as well. The other thing, I think that, I think that we, as a board, ought to have this discussion on capital facilities planning before we take any vote, because I'm thinking, too, about what is happening nationally. You know, what is happening with facilities in communities, whether they're for recreation, whether they're for senior senators, senior centers, or what is the growing trend? Is it, because what I'm hearing around the Cape, anyway, is people want to stay in their villages. I happen to work at the county, which is in the village of West Barnstable, and there's a very strong West Barnstable Community Association, like there is all through Barnstable. And what they're saying is, "We love our village, and we want everything to be in our village." So they come to us as county commissioners and say, "How can we use the county complex in a way that will benefit our village so that we can have events here?" I think the other message that we've been considering for the last couple of years is consolidate, combine, and collaborate. You know, that's kind of our mantra. How can we consolidate facilities? How can we combine them? And then how can we collaborate with the different entities and, and try to see if we can't, we can't put like activities together and, and not have to build something for every single entity? And I suppose, what I've also heard, too, is, is if we, if, if we believe that we owe my generation something, I'm all for that. I feel like, at my age, I'm owed something as, as a senior, that it needs to be supported and it needs to be sustainable. And sustainable, I think, is the big word here. How do we make this whole program sustainable? The other thing I think that's missing from our discussion about the site is the school department. What have they done? Have they yet created a master plan for their fields yet for, I mean, I don't know what they are. I don't know, I don't know how many they have. I don't know what their plan is. I know that the proposed site is a field, and, but we haven't heard from them as to what their master plan is for the fields. Then Sam raised the question about the operating budget. We heard from the consultant just last week that the operating budget is, would be approximately, depending on a 20,000-square-foot building, we'd have to have a $624,000 a year operating budget, and, which is really four times what the current budget is now for the current senior center. So we have to plan for that. I mean, where, where will the revenue come from? And if we're now not able to provide the current departments what they need, and we're saying, "Well, we have to cut them back. They've asked for this. We can't give it to you." How are we going to achieve another $624,000 in, in operating money? Is it going to be additional revenue or other revenue sources? What are those revenue sources? So I think as we plan capital facilities, we should have all these questions, I think, be able to discuss them and know what the answers are. And then the projected cost is different. The projected cost, obviously, nine to maybe 11 million dollars. That would obviously be bonded, so there would be debt service that we would have as well. So in five years, what is our budget going to look like? When we trend our budget forward, and we're going to be getting into the budget soon, and we trend it forward, where will we be in five years? And what will we be able to sustain in terms of debt service as well as operating cost? So I think we should have this whole capital facilities discussion about what can we afford, and then when can we afford it? And, and what will it be? When can we do it? And also, what will, what is the impact on any other facilities we have if we create something new? Or if we even add on to something else? What are the impacts to other buildings or other services? Because I think we owe it to the taxpayers, so that when we propose these and they come up for a vote at town meeting, or they come up for a vote on the ballot, that people, that the community has had, has had a, has been part of the discussion, and the committee, and the community buys into this. And they say, "Yes, this is what we want, and we're willing to pay for it." So when we go to the ballot, we're actually going to vote for it. And I think that's our, our job to make sure that we cover all those steps along the way before we actually move forward. And I mean, we've had presentations. They've been very good. They've been very informative. We've been very supportive to the, to the working group and the work they've done. I'm just saying now, now we have to make this project fit in with the capital facilities that we've already decided to move forward with, and then look at our sources of revenue and our ability to, to achieve those revenue sources so that we could actually pay for it when the time comes. So that's why I'm not too keen on voting on a site tonight until I think we've really laid this out very clearly, so that we know, is it a $20,000 building we need? Is it a $30,000? Or is it a $15,000 building? And what, what are the programs we need to offer? What are the services we want to provide that the community needs? What is it going to cost? Can we afford it? Or do we have to step back a little bit and say, "We can't, we can only afford this much at this time, but we have room to grow when the time is there." End of my story for tonight.
I appreciate all of those concerns, especially because I think that's the road that we, we are on and we are moving forward with. And I think that one of the important things you said is that the senior center is one piece of the fiscal and, you know, climate change and, and building maintenance plan that we need to look at going forward for the whole town. And that, you know, that is something that we started. One of the key elements to that process is knowing the subject of the discussion. So in my mind, I'm, I think the chair really laid out the decision-making correctly. In order to appropriately understand and analyze all of those impacts, you need to know what site you're talking about. And I also appreciated the consultant's suggestions as he, as he went through the process, that, you know, this isn't a stagnant, that this was, you know, this wasn't a, you know, an architecture, an architect's analysis or a builder's analysis of a building. This is, you know, just a, if you're using, for example, 20,000 square feet, something like that. We're not, at this point, at the stage of deciding exactly the rooms, or exactly the programs, or exactly the size. We are, I think, at the stage of at least deciding the site, because in, in some respects, that does define how that the senior center fits into the entire town building and, you know, the, the structures and the, and the maintenance costs and everything to do with the town's assets. We have to know the place, and people have to know the, you know, what, where the, the facility is going to be to think about it going forward. And I also want to respect all the work the school committee has put into, you know, contributing the two sites with respect to the high school area and then also the school administration building. I want to, I didn't see in my packet, I'd like to, Mr. Chair, if you would permit, just have the, the chair of the senior center committee who's here, Mr. Viera, just speak about what the recommendation is on the site right now, just for two minutes.
Okay. I just want to see if there are further questions first.
I think I can answer one of the questions that Pat brought up, and perhaps your question as well. I actually happened to talk to Alan Jacobs today, who's the chairman of the school committee. And I just said to him, I said, "You know, I haven't heard anything recent from you. What, what, what can you offer us?" And he basically said, "We don't care which site, as long as we're made whole. We need to have those fields that are taken by a project like this replaced somewhere. We, we can't afford to give up those." So that was his comment. We're, we don't, we don't have a strong preference on which site on, I guess, and that includes perhaps even the school administration building, but we want to be made whole as a result of the impact of this project. So I'm sure that was an unofficial comment, but at least that's a little bit of current feedback to help address that.
It's consistent that's hit all along.
Yeah, and I, but I also want to say that I feel like we're, we're giving a short shrift a little bit to the committee that spent so much time developing the vision of what this facility could be. And I, I just want to heartily thank you, because I think while we're struggling with how do we make this happen and at what level, you've given us a vision for what could be. And I think then the question becomes, how much of this can we bite off and actually produce as a service to the citizens of this town? So I don't want to, I don't want to dismiss all of your efforts and the efforts of the architects that have actually worked on this thing, because I think it's been a significant contribution to give us, I think, you know, tangible sense of what could be. And then we have to decide what the town really is probably in a position to implement.
I think Mrs. Flynn has raised some excellent points. I think some of those are points that we probably should have thrown at the committee in their work a few years ago, as opposed to raise them right now. My personal feeling is, we may be able to pick a site and build a two-floor shell where only one floor is really finished right now, but has room for future, because then that could have the operating costs down initially, and then we're able to say, "All right, we have the ability to expand." You know, that's, so that's why I'm still saying, "This site may be what we can do." And then we go further into the details, saying, "Is this really feasible? Is this exactly our need right now, or can we build into the future?" Ms. Muffin?
I think that, I think, as, as you were saying, I wish that possibly that had been said two years ago. I think that it would have given some direction to the people who have been working more than two years on this concept, and if it was something that they should have had in their monthly meetings, or that should have been part of what they were going to discuss. And if that is an interest or, or something, an idea coming from the town, they should have been forewarned, and not especially on the night that we have it on the agenda to choose a site. And I think we have gone over the sites, and, and I'm the liaison, and I hear probably a lot more than the board members here, but the amount of work- a lot more than the board members here, but the amount of work and energy and time and meetings for the last two years, I think they're walking in their sleep with the words about how they're going to do this. And I know there's some things that I have heard at meetings that maybe, maybe others haven't heard, and maybe it is a good time for, for the chairman.
Mrs. Flynn had one more thing she wanted to say.
Well, I just wanted to say one thing. I am not denigrating in any way the work of the committee. This really is, I, what I'm saying is, this is something that probably we should have done a while back, that, and we should probably start thinking about capital facilities planning. Because when you get to the point where you are faced with a sizable cost, you have to really think about, if we're going to do this, when can we afford to do it? Can we afford to do it in three years, in five years, maybe in seven years? And, and what are our revenue projections going to look like? And I know that, that what's before us tonight is the site. And the site isn't just taking a piece of property that's owned by the town, it's owned by the school committee, and they want it replaced. So, there's an additional cost to that site if we agree with the school committee that says, "Yes, we'll pay to have another field built." And I don't know what that costs, but that has, that hasn't been built in. And I'm not trying-
Yes, I see.
No, I mean, to the cost of the-
No, it's in the construction cost.
It's in the construction cost.
Yeah, but they're estimated construction costs.
Okay, right. So, I'm just saying that there comes a point when we have to fulfill our fiduciary responsibilities and be very measured as we go forward, and know exactly what we're committing the town to. And at what point are we going to be able to produce the revenue to do that? I just felt that it was time to bring that up before we go too far, that we, we have to be able to say, "This is how it's going to get paid for." Not that it can't be done, it's just how is it going to be done? Because we haven't really gotten to that point yet. And now, we're looking at sites, and I know, they've worked so hard to get to the point that we are, and I don't want to, to hold that thought up any longer. But that it's our job now to make sure, if we move forward, we have to know exactly how we're going to move forward and how we're going to pay for it, just so it's on the record.
Ms. Flynn.
And that's exactly my point. I think you've beautifully laid out all of the concerns that we have to delve into in detail, just the way any public project is done. But in order to know the appropriate information, we have to have a site in mind. And that's why I'd like to hear from the chair.
I mean, Mrs. Flynn also mentioned the idea of being in the neighborhood, in the downtown diligence area. And I really wish there were a perfect site in the downtown, because I think that's the right place for it. It is not where I'm going to be recommending, because I haven't found it, and I don't think that's the recommendation of the senior group. But, Mr. Viera, would you like to have a few words?
Can I just, while Jim's coming up, in looking through the architects' trade-offs on the various sites, the one that's on Brick Hill Road doesn't require replacing tennis courts. And I don't understand, this is a question for the architect, why it's turned out to be more expensive. Is there going to be a field-for-field replacement, septic systems, sewer system connection? Okay, thanks.
You know, as opposed to a pump station right next door?
Yeah.
They haven't actually figured out exactly how they do that, and they, I think they put a $300,000 or $400,000 price tag, is the estimate for that.
Thanks for clearing that up.
Mr. Viera?
Just a couple of comments. I think, in a way, I almost wish Joel hadn't put the $600,000 figure in there, because basically, what he did was, he took several 20,000 square foot senior centers across the, the state, averaged their operating costs, and said, "That's what it's going to be." You know, in some ways, that's like saying, "We're going to average all the towns in the Commonwealth that have 31,000 people in it, and we're going to take that number, and that's what the town's operating cost is going to be." So, you know, there are programs in there that he specified that we don't do. There are programs in there that we intend to do that he might not have had in there. It was just really a number that he came up with. And, you know, we've been working on a more realistic number. I think Brenda talked to you last week about the effort that this community does with volunteers. One of the most important, people that we see in our program is going to be the volunteer coordinator, because so many of our programs can be done with volunteers. We don't expect that the day that building is built, that every single square inch of that building is going to be used. It's a building that we're going to grow into. And, and the possibility of finishing a floor and having space left unfinished for future expansion, all those things are things that we can talk about as, as the process goes on. You know, our expectations at this point are to find a site. We're at a crossroads, quite frankly. And we've made all this progress, and really, the town is expecting us to make a decision and to move forward. And the next step, as has been outlined to us all along, is the site selection. We can do the site selection, we can work on the design, we can work on the program, we can work on the budget. And, and that's what we have always intended to do as we go forward. This is, the discussion that you're having tonight is nothing new for us. It's the kind of stuff that we talk about all the time. You know, that we have, we, this is a step that we need to take in order to go as, as selectmen want to, in order to take the next step. And really and truly, this is going to be extremely disappointing for a lot of people, and it's not just the committee. The, the townspeople are really awaiting a decision so that they can put it in their heads, and then we can, and know and participate in the next step. So, you know, I don't know if there are specific questions that you have, that I'd be happy to address, but, you know, I don't know. Did I, did I-
I, pardon me, I, I wanted to know the committee's site recommendation out of these four.
Okay. We had made a recommendation in the past about the two sites at the high school, or the, the high school facility was the, the working group's recommendation. And, and that was really, as far as we were instructed to take it, to give you a, a final recommendation that wasn't just one. And so, that's what we provided you. We had provided you with that previously. And to go any further and to say, "It should be this site or this site," out of that group that we gave you, is outside the scope of our work. And we discussed this at length just a few days ago, because it was, I came in here last week, and we talked about giving you a final selection. When we met and we reviewed what we had been required to do, we realized that that, that was outside of our scope. So, our recommendation to you was the sites at the high school. And, and, and now it's at your hands, based on, you know, the, the information that Joel provided you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions the board has? Are you ready to move forward? Ms. Flynn?
I'm going to make a motion that we select the Brick Hill Road site. I think that there would be less question about, having had a bunch of kids go through the high school, that traffic issues right there, I think, are less. There is, the consultant measured, mentioned the nearby light being a good traffic control device. And I see that the base cost of the two high school sites, both of which are recommended by the committee, is really not that different. You have 7 to 7.5 for the Gifford Street extension, and 7.2 to 7.7 for the Brick Hill. So, even with the, the accommodating of the sewer issue, I think that, that could even be narrowed with the technology in the future. And so, I'm, I'm going to make a motion that the site we select be the Brick Hill Road site.
A second.
Excuse me?
Question. Could you, do you have the comparison of the square footage of that site compared to the hospitals, hospital?
For the buildings?
Hospital's on my mind, the high school site.
For the buildings?
No, just the total site. I don't-
On land?
Yes, the acres. How many acres on Brick Hill Road, and how many acres on the other site? In terms of the size of the site? Do you know?
It's essentially the same.
The same?
Is this what you're looking at, maybe?
It's essentially the same, because they're accommodating the parking.
The Brick Hill Road, all the parking is really-
14,000, 6,200 square feet difference.
The park is really dedicated to the senior center, the Brick Hill Road site, while the parking at the Gifford Street site is using that parking, but overflow parking floating in from the high school parking area.
One sentence that I heard just a little while ago, that there is an area on the high school property to move the fields. So, it isn't as if they are looking for that. I think that was discovered a couple of weeks ago, and it's flat. And so, they didn't realize they had that much flat space. So, as far as moving any fields or, or changing that, that decision has been made, and that was by the athletic director at, at the high school, discovered that. The other part, as far as the Brick Hill Road is concerned, I think that it will face Brick Hill Road. If you consider the Gifford Street, it is going to, you go in a driveway, and then you see the building. And I think that we should have it so that as the traffic or people are driving by it, we need to see the front of that building, instead of going up to Gifford Street. So, I think Brick Hill offers more for me as far as the location and the facing the street.
Well, both locations allow for facing the street. I mean, they've laid out a building on Gifford Street where you could put the building on the street and have a driveway with the parking behind, just like you could do that at Brick Hill. That there, there are three different layouts they have in Brick Hill. One is where it's on the side, not facing the street. One's where it's on the left-hand side, not facing the street. Or one where they have it facing the street with the parking behind. I was very intrigued with the Gifford Street site for the possibility of the natural walking paths that you could actually get there, that you won't be able to get at the Brick Hill Road. Brick Hill Road, you will be constricted, that you cannot go out of the property any further than that parking lot. You'll have a softball field on one side, you'll have the running track on the other side. It will not be open to the senior center, well, at least to the Gifford Street site. Further north, you'll have woods, you'll have fields, that you'll have places that there will be green space that the seniors could take advantage of, which is one of the few things that made that more appealing to me. Otherwise, I would be leaning towards the Brick Hill site also. Sam?
I'm not sure that's entirely true, what you're describing, because there is a service road that comes in around the back that would lead you into the wooded area behind the high school. But then, you have the whole Long Pond watershed that's just across Brick Hill. There are gates there that actually provide you the service roads, so you can walk back into the area that's the watershed for Long Pond. It's a beautiful area, I walk there a lot. So, I'm not sure if that is a significant trade-off issue.
Could I just ask if Bob Leary could come up and have a discussion? And this was from a meeting that we, that I listened to you at one point when we were discussing the difference of Gifford-
You can say no.
No, he's, no. If you, if you would just share with the selectmen, the meeting when we were discussing Gifford as in comparison to Brick Hill, and you were talking about the direction of the face of the building, if I give you enough-
Yes, I was glad that you brought that up, because I think that's important. If we're going to spend $9 million on a building, we should be able to see it, and the townspeople should be able to see it. That was part of the discussion of the group, that we, anything we built, we wanted people to see it. We wanted to show this off as a part of something that Falmouth has done for, for its people. I think the Brick Hill site is more advantageous, because if you're heading east, there's only one left-hand turn, as opposed to two going into the Gifford Street. Also, having taught at that high school for 21 years, like 31 years of teaching, and knowing what the traffic is like up there, and just coming around that bend, I think it's, it's not the best location for people to be coming in. And as far as the walking trails and all that, Sam brings up a great point. You can go across the street, there's that whole watershed area. You can even go out hunting if you want. So, I, I don't think that's really a, a great selling point for the Gifford Street extension site.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Fitterin?
Mark Fitterin, Precinct 6. Two years ago, when you first announced this committee, it was in the paper and announced for about a month, I applied. I was the only one that applied, I wasn't appointed. I came at that point in time, I had done some investigation with the Cape Cod Baptist Church was available on East Falmouth Highway for $800,000. It had three times the square footage of the current senior center that we have now. Everyone seemed to think that was too small. We, when we voted on the sewer, there was a presentation given by the finance committee with a little pink bar graph up on the top of $5 million for a senior center. Now, as it turns out, we're going to be spending twice that much, and that's only an estimate, and you know how those things work out. This is my idea, but I was speaking with somebody that works in Town Hall last week, and this is an idea that's been going around amongst Town Hall, but no one in Town Hall wants to volunteer it, because they feel there's a bit of an atmosphere of an intimidation from the front office. But their idea is the, to purchase the Falmouth Inn, which the guy is desperate to sell. It has more than enough room for the senior center, has enough room for the dispatch, it has a kitchen in it, it has a swimming pool, so we could disabuse ourselves of the idea of the public-private partnership and development on 151. And there would be enough space left over for storage of the records in Town Hall out of the floodplain. And when you're throwing around a $9 million price tag for this senior center, I really think that intelligently, that might be something that someone wants to look at. You can take right-hand turns in and out, there's all kinds of room in the back. As everybody knows, you can access it from the front, you can access it from the back. It's next to the Gus Canty, where numerous senior activities are held already. There's a track there if people wanted to walk, there's the gym if people wanted to do any type of exercise. And I think it was, as I say, it's not my idea, but I think it was something that was completely overlooked. And rehabilitation, purchasing old buildings and rehabilitating them sometimes can come in half the price. I mean, our high school wasn't an example of that, obviously, but we're spending twice what you promised us already. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the Brick Hill Road site for the new senior center, say aye.
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 Opposed? None? Your eyes have it. Okay. Our next item is discussion on the board, the role the board wants to play on warrant article recommendations for the annual town meeting and the special town meeting. And you have in your packet a few items that have been suggested as starting points for our discussion.
Mr. Chair, point order?
Yep.
Did we skip number four? Have to apply for vested pruning on the town property?
I'm on number three right now.
Three is a board-
Ah, excuse me, I thought that was at the end.
Are we also assigned precincts, meetings as part of that?
Why don't we start with that? So, we do have the precinct meetings coming up? Yes. Ms. Muffin?
No, I was just going to ask you, the system you were using for this. So, we're just going to start. And do you want to know which ones you want to, for selectmen to speak on, or are you still thinking about that?
No, that's what I would like to discuss, which ones are, that the board wants to make a presentation on, and which members of the board would like to do so.
Okay.
And I'll start out saying that I am prepared to make a presentation on the operating, on the capital budget, specifically on the consolidated dispatch center and our recommendation of the police station, and the history as to why we are doing consolidated dispatch, why we're recommending the police station, and what the consequences financial of the town meeting choosing the fire station instead, which is certainly up to them, and they can amend. Our recommendation, town meeting floor, I think will be, with that to be $582,000 to cover the cost, and town meeting can amend our recommendation to make it the $720,000 that we need for the fire station. But I'll be making that presentation with those articles.
You want to say which number it is? Which article?
That's Article 9.
Nine?
Very good decision, Doc.
And then, the other articles that, I want to just make sure whether, I think, Mr. And then the other articles that, I want to just make sure whether, I think Mr. Suso and Ms. Harper will certainly be making some presentation of other articles, but if they're ones that members of the board specifically wanted to talk about, I would think in the special town meeting, having someone discuss the, both articles, the petitions article and the planning board article recommendation. Actually, I'll start with that discussion. The planning board will be meeting tomorrow night to have their recommendation on that article. We really don't have much of a meeting before that, before town meeting, and I would like to entertain a discussion about one response, is if they do not make a positive recommendation, what do we want to do? And so I'll start with that discussion as to, if their recommendation is indefinite postponement.
On which article now? Are we talking about the special?
Special.
Article two?
Article three.
Article three.
On Article 3, if they recommend indefinite postponement, what action do we want to take?
Well, I would be, I would propose to take, make a positive motion. I think the presentations that Frank Duffy, Julian Suso, and Heather Harper made to the planning board would be appropriate as a presentation at town meeting at that point. I thought they were very effective presentations, and what they represented. If you wanted a selectman to make that positive motion, I'll be happy to.
I would propose that we not make a positive motion, and, because I don't want to, I think it's a mistake for us to go in the face of what our planning board has recommended. And I think to be seen as fighting against our appeals board and our planning board doesn't serve us as well as taking indefinite postponement to heart and coming back in the April town meeting with an article that they actually can support, I think would be a more powerful position to take.
And I think more appropriate. I mean, they are an elected board, it is in their purview. So I would, I would also be against making a positive recommendation. I think we, it's, we leave it up to the planning board, and we go with whatever they decide.
In the event they do make a positive motion, Mr. Patterson, I'd be happy to have you then add the support of the board selectmen to the article.
Well, I, I would like to see the presentation be made more public. And I think there's value for those presentations to be made at town meeting, regardless of how town meeting goes. I think they stand as the body that can evaluate the reasoning one way or the other. But I think the presentations are something that need to be made, because it needs to clarify, we need to clarify a lot of distorted information that's been presented. I'm using the word carefully to be diplomatic, when I think there's a lot of misinformation that's been distributed in the public and through the media that needs to be corrected. And these presentations did that. And so I think this is an opportunity we should not be passing up to get this out in a more public forum.
I'm not sure if there's a way of making the recommendation, positive recommendation for the purpose of the presentation without really asking the question, which I think is what, I could be very supportive of that with that condition, but I don't think a conditional positive motion really makes sense either.
Well, first of all, the, if I might, the, the presentation was already televised, and it also could be a special presentation if you could get an FCTV producer. So in terms of making information available, I don't think, you know, I, I think they're separate. I think we, you know, certainly can make the information available, but, but it doesn't need to come through this avenue of the, the planning board's purview.
Mr. Patterson?
I have a lot of experience on the inefficiency of communication, and I think you need to take every opportunity to communicate. FCTV is not viewed by all people all the time. Most people don't bother, but when town meeting is going on, they tend to tune in. So I, I would just simply say that, yes, I know it's been made before, but people tune in at different times, and you've got the town meeting members as an audience right there. Not all of them are necessarily tuning in to the planning board meetings and paying any attention, and we see that, because you see questions are raised by individuals. And all of the rest of us have heard it a couple of different times, but they haven't heard it for the first time, you know. So I, I would suggest that, that's my rationale for doing that. And I, I understand, you know, you're trying to be diplomatic about how we, how we encourage this decision on this article, and I hope the planning board makes it easy for us. But I still think it's an opportunity we shouldn't pass up.
Well, another option to take is to not have the board, this board, make a positive motion. Somebody else could, even a member of this board, I think, could make a positive motion on the floor, and then make that proposal available, and, you know, be prepared to give that presentation, because it's a positive motion.
That's fine.
And so, what I would, do you want to make a motion that we make a positive recommendation? We can have a vote on that?
No, I have a problem.
Okay.
I, I.
Okay. Well, let's sit like that, then.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Article 2 is about past fiscal bills. I think that's something that, I feel like can be handled by Mr. Suso and Mrs. Harper. Article 2 is the four bills from, past bills. Article 3 is an amendment to the zoning code. This will be proposed by the planning board and their recommendation. I'm not sure if that's something that we need to necessarily make a board presentation on. Article 4 is going to be definite postponement. Article 5 is second phase of the ESCO project. Article 6, 7, and 8, I think probably be more, better explained either by Mr. Suso or Ms. Petit than probably coming from us. Article 9 is what I discussed, I'll be taking the lead on. We have also funding for non-capital projects.
Might add on Article 9, there are multiple requests that come through this board, including the archives and the town hall design, and those are two that board members may want to comment on.
Mr. Suso, I had chatted, he'll probably be handling those other ones, so that our words are more, are more directed on the consolidated dispatch.
Happy to do so.
Articles 12, 13, and 14?
I think the EDIC is doing a presentation.
Okay.
Okay.
Article 15 is about the homeowners being able to get a building permit for weatherization. 15, closing of public streets, the pools, and Article 17. Article 18, I think it might be useful to have someone from our board discuss that, because it's something we've been pushing for a while, and I think may need some explanation. If we have someone who'd be willing to take on that.
I'll do Article 18.
Okay, thank you. Article 19 and 20. Article 19 is on the petition article, three estimates. And these are both recommendations of indefinite postponement, and a fee structure for the Compost facility. Article 24 is the petitions article on the low-pressure grinder pumps. We recommend indefinite postponement on that.
Well, unless there's a positive motion, if there's a positive motion made on the floor.
I'm sure there will be.
Then you need someone to speak on that, and would, I mean, I, it seems to me that, you know, somebody like Ray Jag is going to be able to provide the more detail, but if you needed somebody, it's not really necessary to call on him, I don't think, as a, as a town manager, but if you needed somebody to at least organize that response, I'd be happy to.
Well, I was going to put Article 4 down here if we needed to have that discussion.
The Lawrence Academy.
Academy, Q plus.
Sure. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Happy to do that.
Okay.
I think Article 24 may be, as it comes up, we'll see what we need to say. I'm not sure. Our view is, since it was indefinite postponement, it's going to be much harder for us to articulate exactly what the arguments are against that.
But Ray Jag should be able to make a presentation.
Absolutely. Okay, great. Thank you. I just wanted to go over that, so we had some clarity and direction in what we're going to do with that. Any other discussion concerning town meeting? We will have our meetings in the evening, 6:30 on both nights, to go over possible agenda items. Okay. Our next item was, Ms. Moffat?
I think there is a conflict on the October 29th evening.
Right. So now the precinct meetings. So the first ones are on Wednesday, October 28th.
Mm-hmm.
Is precinct 3.
I can do that one.
Well, I'm in 3, so I can do that.
All right. Having more than one is also, can often be useful, so. And then precinct, on Thursday, we have a bunch of conflicts, because we have both precinct 1 and 2, and I will be facilitating that one. And there's also the zoning board of appeals meeting starting at 6 o'clock. And is there another precinct meeting that night also?
Just 1 and 2 on Thursday.
Just 1 and 2 on Thursday.
Right.
Okay. Well, I will certainly be there. Then on the next Wednesday, you have the list there. November 4th, we have precincts 4 and 7 together at the East Falmouth Elementary School.
I can do that one, too.
Okay. And is 8 and 9 on the same night, and I?
8 and 9 is the 28th, which, um.
Okay, so the 8th and 9th, this Wednesday, I'll go out to the Barnstable Fairgrounds for the 8th and 9th.
Okay.
And then the other, last is the precincts 5 and 6.
The 28th has 2 as well, Mr. Chairman.
28th, 3, 8 and 9.
8 and 9.
Right. 3 were Rebecca and I, and 8 and 9 is Doug.
Okay. And then?
The last is the November 5th, for 5 and 6.
Thursday, November 5th, precincts 5 and 6.
I will definitely be there.
Okay. And if anyone else can get to it.
And probably at the others as well, but I'm not committing. I will commit to 5 and 6.
As long as we make sure we have somebody at each one of them, that would be great.
And I think the only one I'm not going to be at is the one that you're leading on the 29th, otherwise I'll try to be at it, I'll be arrested.
Great.
Right.
The 28th?
Yep.
Yeah, the 29th is, I probably won't be there. I have Mark Solinsky's retirement party that night, so.
Since we're talking calendar issues, I will be out of town from Sunday to Wednesday of next week, which is the reasons we're not having it. I declared we weren't having a meeting next Monday, if you were wondering why the calendar worked out that way.
Okay.
But if an emergency comes up, you can certainly call one and tell me what happens. Cannot call me into it.
Right.
All right. So our next item on agenda is the request for the, by the Holmes, for the Holmes property, 41 Cove Street. This is for a request of listing permitting permit, and because it pervets on our property, we need to do so approval before it can go to ConCon. I think after that, it actually comes back to us again. Mr. Bryvogel, do you want to say a few words, please?
Good evening. Excuse me. My name is Ken Bryvogel, with the firm Jack Lane is calling. We're representing the Holmes family. They filed a notice of intent to rebuild and reconstruct the bank stabilization. This is great pond, pay on the property here, Cove Street, that's a non-road. So a small portion of the work, that is still in green, is on town property. So we filed a notice of intent. Conservation Commission has instructed us to come before you to obtain your permit, your consent, before we can go forward with the hearing, with the Conservation Commission. So assuming that you do give the consent, we'll go forward with the hearing before the Conservation Commission. We'll have to comply with all the town and state bylaws, and then they'll issue an order of conditions. The, just a little bit of background, further background. The Holmes family have owned the property since 1985. They did file for a notice of intent in 2008 to construct original biolog bank stabilization system. And our order of conditions at that time was to.
Just to remind you, if you come forward, to make sure you take the mic with you.
I'm sorry. Okay.
You're all set now.
In 2008, when they filed originally for permission to create the bank stabilization project, our order of conditions was that they obtained approval of board selectmen, which the board of selectmen held a meeting November 2008, and granted permission at that time. So this is basically the same project that you approved in 2008.
Ms. Moffat?
Do they go through this same process approximately every five years? I mean, as I was reading everything about this, I, I just think, what is it that is the conflict between the homeowner and the Conservation Committee? What, what is the issue that they have to keep doing? It was '08, I think, was the first time they did, and now we're coming and doing it again?
Any of this?
Yes, simply because the existing biolog system is in need of repair.
Okay.
Okay. And that just happens over time, because we have had some storms, and no structure will last forever. So, well, there's five years or 10 years. You do have to periodically come back, neither repair it or replace the existing system.
And why isn't the town doing that if it's on town property?
Well, just a small portion of the work is actually on town property.
Okay.
The rest of the biolog system is on property owned by the Holmes.
So it's just the green section that we're discussing this evening?
Yes.
And every five years, you have to come back to select?
Well, it was 2008, so it's seven years.
Seven years ago.
Is the pruning also on town property?
I'm sorry?
The pruning?
Yes. The pruning would be directly here. The water line is approximately here, so there's going to be actually very little pruning on town property.
The, I mean, according to drawing, it looks here. It looks like the pruning's also going all the way down.
They did file for a request to do pruning here.
Right.
In 2008, they, they received permission, but the Conservation Commission suggested that they drop that, and they have decided to drop the pruning to the south.
Because that one, certainly the plan I have right here, just still has that as what they're being asked for. So we wouldn't be able to, so I guess this must be an updated one. We would not be able to sign off on that one, so.
Mr. Chairman, could I just clarify? This is both bank stabilization and vista pruning.
Right.
Just to clarify that for the board.
Yes, that's correct.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Ms. Finer?
Could you explain that half-moon looking, I don't know if it's a structure in the, in the top, top part of the design here? What is that?
I believe this is a driveway, I believe.
Oh, is that what it is?
The center is a miniature lighthouse in the middle.
Oh, okay.
So it's simply a driveway.
I saw, I, I looked at the plan today, and, and I saw what it was called, which I don't recall right now.
Construction stockpile.
But I couldn't figure out what it was.
Says construction, stockpile, and staging area?
Yeah, something like that. Construction, stockpile, staging area. That's what the plan says.
Okay. I'm sorry.
But it's a part of a driveway?
So they're probably using the driveway to, to hold stuff while they're doing the construction.
Yeah. I was just curious as to what it was. It doesn't pertain to the, to what's before us.
Well, I think for the Conservation Commission, it's delineating that that's where they're going to be doing the staging, so it's not over near the water resource area, and, or in the stone driveway. Mr. Patterson?
I wonder if you could explain the limit of work where they would, they would access this area to replace that or repair that biolog?
I'm not sure exactly.
Take, take, take the mic with you, please. It's not for us, it's for them.
I would have to look carefully at the, the plan, but I believe the limit of work, there should be a line on here. I cannot.
It's going through the footpath above?
Fine.
So the footpath above is where it says is the, the construction access to the north of the house?
Okay. Construction, stockpile, and staging here, there.
To your left, there's that footpath, and that says, and it says there's going to be a ramp built from the water to that footpath.
A little below that, where it curves this way?
Well.
No, further down.
This, this dark line here is the landward side of the bank, okay. There, there will be some work done in this area. So the Conservation Commission will establish what they will approve for the limit of work. I have to apologize that I do not know that exactly where the limit of work will be. I didn't think I was going to be getting into the, you know, the wetlands issues tonight.
It's listed down way below in the bottom left. There's a solid dark line, and a little bit higher, to your left.
Okay.
That's all the line right, no, left. That one right there says it's the limit of work. So it definitely won't be going anywhere beyond that. Again, on the board, the process Again, on the board, the process is, we give them permission to go to the Conservation Commission, to have the Conservation Commission, and that actually comes back to us again for us to approve the conditions that the Conservation Commission puts on.
But tonight, it's only about town property.
Right.
Because they're doing, and then the, when the Conservation Commission whole plan will come back to us.
Right.
But tonight, we're only approving this on the town property, the part that belongs to the house.
Just as if we were in a butter next door who wanted to do something.
Exactly.
Sam?
Well, I guess the only question I have is, if we don't want to see the vista pruning take place, do we segregate the biolog construction from the vista pruning? Because I thought you raised a good point. The specification that we received actually differs from the statement by Mr. Bryvogel.
Well, we actually have two different plans, and one of the plans does not talk about the vista pruning. And we're not signing off on plans anyway, because that isn't until it comes to the ConCon and then comes back to us.
Conservation Commission may impose further restrictions than what we've asked for, and there is some negotiation back and forth with the Conservation Commission. You know, they requested us to drop the vista pruning in this area, which we have done.
Okay.
So there may be other things that they may request after a hearing.
And there were even conditions that we can impose after the ConCon. It's just really, the only issue tonight is, do we give, does the town give permission for the work to be done on town property? Whatever work that they decide the ConCon, then we decide.
Would you like to entertain a motion?
I would.
I move that we permit the work on town-owned land for the sake of installing a biolog for shoreline stabilization.
Vista pruning, it's vista pruning.
And it's only to approve the request to submit a notice of intent?
I see. All right.
That's right.
Then I, then I move that we approve the submission of the notice of intent to do this work.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next is request for a temporary sign at the North Falmouth Elementary School fundraiser sign. It's one sign, one freestanding sign. It does have the recommendation from the Historic District Commission.
I move approval of the temporary sign.
Second.
Just one second. Is this for the PT, the actual movement is the PTO, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to disclose that I have given some very, very minimal legal advice to the North Falmouth PTO in the past. I don't think it's a conflict with this decision, but I did want to make that disclosure.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes, I'm your liaison to the Community Preservation Committee, and this project has been discussed on a number of occasions. Certainly one that they support. They probably would like to be able to pay for the entire thing, but they only have limited funds for various types of projects. And so they've partially funded this project, but can't fund it completely. So I think it's an outstanding effort on the part of the PTO to replace this equipment. It takes it off of the town's capital and operating budget in terms of liability to the town. So I think this is a very appropriate sign to constantly remind people of where they are in their fundraising efforts and how much more they have to raise to get to that final point where they can actually build these two, and actually two different playgrounds on the school campus to satisfy the needs of two different age groups. So I would move that we approve this sign variance for the North Falmouth Elementary PTO.
Motion?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Flynn. For the discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none of the ayes have.
Thank you.
Sign permit?
It's a cute sign.
It is. Get up the ladder. Next item on our agenda are any individual selectmen's reports. Mr. Patterson?
Want me to start again?
Sure. Tradition.
Well, at your, at your request, I attended the opioid correlation organizing meeting that the Falmouth Police Department has sponsored, and I want to say that it was a very encouraging meeting. We're all aware of this tragic epidemic, I guess, of people really overdosing on opioids to some, in some cases, to the point of killing themselves. And there were approximately 30 people here. Julian was there, as well as Karen Cardera from the Department of Human Services. Mark Sullivan was there, representatives from the police force and the fire department there. School representatives were Nancy Taylor was there, and so were Charlie, I forget his name, Joe Dwyane, I think is the correct, as well as some pastors from the United Methodist Church, and also from North Falmouth Convocational Church, where they were really representatives from the entire community. Oh, and I'm sorry, I should mention Gosnell. So even some of the organizations in town that actually are trying to support those victims of addiction in various forms. So I was very encouraged to see so many people turning out and collaborating. From this initial meeting, they basically selected a number of task areas and assigned individuals to actually head these up. And so we'll eventually reorganize and form task groups to address such things. The police department took over the, trying to control the supplies, they're already doing it, because that's an area that they just naturally fall into. But then there's the whole education issue of trying to educate and change people's perceptions, and that was broken into two groups, the school-aged community and also the adult community. So two different groups of people kind of trying to address those two different cohorts of people within the town. Then there was the actual support of the victims, but also of the victims' families. And so that was another task force that was actually kind of created. So we have this kind of organizational structure that's been created, and we'll be getting back together after the first of the year to actually put groups of people together to begin to address each of these areas. I think a significant movement, and certainly a show of cooperation and concern across a large spectrum of the people that are affected, or are interested in trying to make a difference in this whole area. So that I wanted to mention specifically. There was a nice article in newspapers about it, so at least the population should be aware of it. I also attended the planning board hearing on Article III. The, I went to the Falmouth Housing Trust annual meeting. Rebecca was there, and Sue was there. A great kind of celebration of progress and efforts in providing affordable housing units, the St. Mark's Road project, celebrating the completion of that, and then talking about kicking off this, the Oddfellas Hall projects that are coming up. Let's see, I also attended on that same night the EDIC presentation of the town landfill solar panel project. And I then actually went after that to a meeting at the Quay Bay International Estuary Research Reserve on what government is doing about flood risk, and managed to get, catch some of the presentations there. The Cape Cod Commission was there to present some of their work. The Coastal Zone Management State Agency presented some work, talking about the things that they were doing. And then also, a new person is a Cooperative Extension Service at the Barnstable Cooperative Extension Service, who is actually here as a specialist in helping the towns find ways to get into some of the programs that actually will lower flood insurance rates. And it's something that I guess Falmouth hasn't, hasn't really taken on, but is available to us and an assistant, a resource for actually helping with all of that. She's already started working with a number of the other municipalities. It's a relatively new program, and she's there basically to facilitate answering questions and what have you to help us qualify for some of these programs. And Falmouth is doing lots of things. It's just, we got to go through those administrative groups of getting signed up and getting credit for it. So it was a...
While you're on that topic, can I add to that? Because she was hired by the county to do that, and she comes, her name is Virginia. I can't think of the last name.
Shannon.
Shannon? Well, then she's from Virginia.
She's from Virginia? That is correct. That's the connection.
I knew Virginia was in there somewhere.
She came here from South.
But she really comes with a great deal of experience, and she's very, very knowledgeable. And the whole idea is, and part of her compensation is from a grant, and a small amount of it comes from the county, but the whole idea is to really help towns, help their citizens to deal with the flood insurance issues. It's not to help the town, it's to help the town, help the citizens. The whole idea is to get people knowledgeable and know what to do, like me, when they are in the flood zone and they have to pay flood insurance. So we should really take advantage of her. And that comes through the planning board, and mostly planning, not the planning board, but planning and zoning, I think. What did she...
She would be relating to our planning board, I think, and it has to do with our hazard mitigation plan, and we actually generated that, would be an important component of this. By the way, she's moved here most recently from Virginia.
That's right.
But she's actually a New Englander by birth and culture. I could use that word, and I don't mean it in a bizarre in a sense. Anyway, useful information, and I think, you know, I have her card, and I'll be talking to some of the planning department individuals to try to connect them so that we can maybe tap into some of these opportunities. But it's good to see that kind of work being done, at least, and helping everybody begin to tackle this whole issue of coastal flooding and storm surges and that sort of thing. The last thing I want to mention is that I did attend, well, I guess I was the only one there. I attended the Lawrence Windows Project update. Still moving along, resolving some of the issues relative to the windows and the doors, but making good progress. And expect to have a request for quotation out. They've decided to hold it off until the beginning of next calendar year, because that's probably the period when contractors are most likely to be trying to build a backlog for the next year. And that's really at the recommendation of Patrick Callahan, who of course is, you know, a general contractor in his own right, just in terms of the timing. They, just one of the things I could mention is that they have decided to put an automatic door opener on the ramp, the door that is at the top of the wheelchair ramp next to the auditorium, so that there will, and it will be limited by a security device, so not anybody can push the button and have the door just automatically open. It will be, of course, only in those times of the day when there aren't classes in session like town meeting, or otherwise, they'll have to get acknowledgement from the office in order to actually gain entrance by using that wheelchair door opener, if you will. So that's actually been included in the scope of the project. While they're redoing that door, they figured it's the time to go ahead and add that capability as well. And I might mention, that was really at the request of Jane Perry, who is the chairman of the Disabilities Committee, who raised that as a request that they consider including that kind of functionality for our disabled community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Ms. Moffitt?
I think we did double up on several things. But I went to a early morning senior center meeting, and that was at 8:30 in the morning, and that lasted a couple hours. And of course, everything we've decided, you already know what happened at the meeting. I went to the beach committee meeting, and it's amazing the amount of work that is done in closing the beaches, and the amount of equipment and the number of volunteers. There's a lot of volunteers that work just to get those beaches closed. And then they're always thinking about the next thing they have to do through the wintertime on the beaches. So I like the beach committee meetings, those are good. And then the Falmouth Housing, and then we did EDIC. And I have a request that I'd like, that has been in my head, I think, probably five years, and tonight I thought of it. I would like to know why we are not having town meeting at the high school. And the first time that I brought this up, I was talking to people at the high school, and they said it wasn't wired yet, so that it could be on TV. Well, there's a gentleman there that works on all of that, Ryan Weber, and I've spoken to him several times, and he said, oh, no, we're all connected now. He said all the town needs to do is to make their decisions, and I just think it would be the perfect place. I went to a concert there on Saturday night, and it was just so comfortable, and as far as the sound. And I just do not understand, when we have that available to us, why we are not having town meeting in that auditorium, because there's plenty of seats and plenty of room.
I think it's actually our decision.
Well, I didn't know if it started in the clerk's office or how it started, but it starts with the selectman. Well, then I definitely, whenever, whatever the timeline is, I'm sure there's rules for that also, of when you decide that, and then can that be brought up at the November town meeting, or do you have to wait until the April, and then it's another year?
I think the appropriate thing could be to put it on our November 9th Board of Selectmen's meeting for discussion, vote it that evening, so then we could announce it at the next town.
At the November town.
I don't think we should move it without having announced it at the previous town meeting.
Yes, that's...
Town meeting, yes.
Oh, we can't have conversation now.
But we could also...
Go ahead.
I was going to say, we could refer to the moderators' town meeting rules committee. I mean, it's really our decision where town meeting is held. And we were going to have it at high school once before, like you said, but they didn't have, they weren't prepared for it. They weren't prepared for it. Capabilities that were needed. But the chairs are certainly far more comfortable. You look down and it's, I don't know, it has a lot of advantages.
It certainly does.
I will put it on our agenda for our pre-town meeting for discussion, because we really probably shouldn't discuss any further without actually...
Thank you very much. My goodness, that didn't even take 100 words in 30 seconds, and I've been after it for years. Good.
Just two quick, kind of more regional points. The Cape and Islands selectmen's group, which Mary Pat and I are both on the board, is also having an upcoming presentation on the opioid crisis, and so it's an important thing for all of the Cape towns to coordinate their efforts so that we, you know, all the bright ideas get shared, and all the economy of scale suggestions in terms of, you know, using finances, so finances get well spent. And then the other thing is, I attended a meeting for the Cape Water Quality Committee, and it's a, it's a really great group that the Cape Cod Commission has put together, and it's the beginnings of a similar thing where all the water quality issues, the things that Mashby is trying now based on a Falmouth model, are all shared. And so that we, you know, the cleaning up of the Cape water and all of the positive effects of that to our business, our lifestyle, tourism and otherwise, can happen more exponentially more quickly, you know, in terms of what works, what doesn't work, what's a good, what's money well spent, what isn't. So that's, I think, a very positive thing for all of Falmouth.
I just have one thing to say about Open Cape. We have a new executive director there, his name is Steve Johnston, and he came from the private sector. He came from quite a high-tech company. I don't want to really talk about, too much about his background, but he's really now working on the last mile, because that's the big thing, and they've already started in Falmouth. And but the last mile really connects businesses and residents. That's really what it's about, and I know the business community is really anxious to have that connection. So I'm planning to meet with him next week and see, you know, what we can do. But he's very knowledgeable, and I think that we'll see a lot more coming from Open Cape with him there.
The EDIC is very involved with that.
Yeah, that's it for me.
And soon, I also went to the, and Mr. Sussa also, the introduction of the new director of the Woodslaw Geographic on last Friday evening. And I also had a nice chat with the new director of the Woodslaw Research Center, who is very eager to see what that organization can do to support the town. And I've invited him to join our workshop with the planning board on coastal resiliency, and either he will be there or a representative to give us some scientific expertise on climate warming.
Brilliant.
And what's going to happen to the Cape from a scientific point of view.
Did either of you go to a steamship authority meeting?
Not the interim, we have one this week, though.
We're meeting with them, with the representatives tomorrow, but they did have their meeting last Tuesday, in which they did have some substantial conversation about the possibility of freight from New Bedford, and they are going to be, continue to look into that.
of freight from New Bedford, and they are going to be, continue to look into that.
You know, I'd like to really bring that up again, because I noticed that's been on their agenda recently, is moving freight out of New Bedford. And Sue and I attended a DOT meeting at Sandwich Tower Hall about a month or so ago, six weeks ago. And at the very end of the meeting, happened to mention to the group how many years Falmouth has spent, because they're talking about traffic on the bridges. How do we reduce traffic on the bridge? And it was the idea that Falmouth has been working for 25 years to reduce traffic, to reduce the freight coming into Falmouth and moving the freight from New Bedford so that it goes to the islands from there. And if you think that of all the things we need, living here on the mainland, for, for our lives to move forward and umpteen different directions, the people on the vineyard in Neotucket need the same things, including, you know, building materials, construction materials, all that sort of thing. And it all comes over the bridge. And they were like, oh, instead, if you, if we just moved that freight to New Bedford, we wouldn't have the conversation about the bridge. There would be so much less traffic coming over the bridges because of the freight. It would make a huge difference. So finally, I think it's, it's coming under discussion.
Someone's listening.
But that's because I think that there are other commercial boat operators that are also interested in moving the freight. So now I think that the steamshipers put it on their agenda because they could have competition.
Mr. Sussel?
It could be. I'm not impugning anyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board's aware, under separate cover, you have received the town meeting warrant booklet, which is being delivered to town meeting members as we speak. And I want to thank Finance Director Jennifer Petit, the Finance Committee, and Stacy also in our Finance Department for their fine work on that booklet. I also was pleased to join Heather Harper this past Thursday in attending a meeting of the Gulf Advisory Committee. On Wednesday, it was my pleasure to attend the opening session of the World Oyster Symposium at Marine Biological Laboratory. It was indeed very impressive and went for multiple days. I was only able to join them for the, that opening day. Also, on that same Wednesday, I attended the annual meeting of the Falmouth Service Center. My compliments to Brenda Swain, members of the board, and all the volunteers, and Sumerin and Pat Flynn also were in attendance at that annual meeting. Let's see, also, oh, on Thursday evening, I attended the EDIC presentation on solar energy proposal at the landfill, and that was very enlightening as well. We have three town meeting warrant articles, as the board's aware, coming up in November on that proposal. Also, members of the board, you've received a draft, it'll shortly be finalized, of the IXP Consultants' Radio Communications Assessment. That's part of, that's the other element of the overall analysis package on the consolidated communications facility. And in a nutshell, that assessment determined that the existing location of the radio antenna is not a barrier to the selectman's determination of the ultimate location of that communication center. So that is not a determining factor. In fact, the town has appropriate infrastructure already in place dealing with that, and that was the analysis and conclusion of that consultant, so I wanted to confirm that as well. And we will be attending, I and Heather, Jennifer Petit, and, and other staff members, as available, will be attending precinct meetings as time allows, obviously, on Thursday evening. Heather and I will be part of the hearing process with the Zoning Board of Appeals on the wind turbines, so we will not be in attendance at the precinct meetings on Thursday evening. But I certainly will be on the, the other evenings, the balance of this week, Wednesday, of course, and in the week to come. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Do you want to just read exactly where the precinct meetings are?
Sure.
And we discussed, we were going to get them, but I'd just love for the public to know when and where those are going to be.
All right, so precincts one and two are going to meet Thursday, October 29, at 7:00 PM, at the Herman Foundation Meeting Room, Falmouth Public Library. Precinct three will meet Wednesday, October 28, at 7:00 PM, at the Gus Canty Community Center, first floor.
October 28?
28.
Okay.
Precincts four and seven will meet Wednesday, November 4, at 7:00 PM, at East Falmouth Elementary School. Precincts five and six will meet Thursday, November 5, at 7:00 PM, at the North Falmouth Elementary School Cafeteria. And lastly, precincts eight and nine will meet Wednesday, October 28, at 7:00 PM, at Cape Cod Fairgrounds.
The other thing I do want to remind people, since we won't have a meeting before then, is November 11 at 11:00 PM, there will be, of course, the ceremony for Veterans Day.
Oh, yeah.
And I believe there still is traditionally a march that we do down the street for that, starting at about 10:40, meeting in front of the Bank of the Village Green.
I forgot, last Saturday, I went to the, a 7:00 AM breakfast at the North Falmouth Congregational Church.
Kiwanis?
For the Kiwanis. Kiwanis left Falmouth in 1987, and we've never had any Kiwanis since then. So this group of people, there wasn't a large group of people, other than the Kiwanis members themselves. But it turned out that one, that the, I think they call them a lieutenant governor, is a former selectman from Mashpee. I don't know if you remember Terry Cook? She was a selectman many years ago. Well, she's the lieutenant governor of the Kiwanis. That was an interesting reconnection with her. But either their whole thrust is for children. Every dollar they raise goes to children's causes and issues. And it's nice that they're, they're resurrecting themselves here in Falmouth, so I just thought it was good to know that.
Any other business?
Move to adjourn?
Aye.
David say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. All right.